Thank you for attending tonight. I'm councillor Steve Robinson and I'll be your chair tonight. We'll begin our meeting with the land acknowledgement. On April 8th, 2024, we acknowledge that this sacred land on which Smith Falls is now located has been a site of human activity for over 10,000 years in its rich and indigenous history. This land is the ancestral and unceded territory of the Algonquin Anishinaabe Nation. We are grateful to the Algonquin ancestors who cared for the land and water in order that we might meet here today. We are also grateful to the Algonquin people for their contribution in the making of the Rideau Canal, which runs through Smith Falls. We are mindful of broken covenants and the need to reconcile with all our relations. Together, may we care for this land and each other, drawing on the strength of our mutual history of nation building through peace and friendship, being mindful of generations to come. And I'd like to call the meeting to order at 5:01 PM. And I need a motion. Or I have a recommended motion, I need a mover and a second. Moved by councillor Miller, seconded by councillor Brennan, that the April 8th, 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting Agenda be approved as circulated. All in favour? Agreed. Is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest and/or conflict of interest in general nature thereof? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of minutes. I have a move by councillor Miller and seconded by councillor Quinn, that the minutes of the March 25th, 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting be approved as circulated. All in favour? We have no delegations and I believe just CAO's report tonight?
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. So two items for committee. The first is the provincial budget. As council may know, the province announced their budget a short time ago and there were a lot of items in there. There were nine that are particularly salient to what we do. So I won't go through all nine, but there were a few, I think, that are worthy of mention. One is money for 152 million over the next three years for individuals facing unstable housing and dealing with mental health and addiction. So that's part of the delegations that we made at the Roma Conference. So that comes as good news. We're not sure what form that's going to take, but certainly a step in the right direction. I had mentioned at the last meeting, there was, I guess, a pre-budget announcement about the Housing Enabling Water Systems Fund being increased. So that was confirmed. One of particular interest, 200 million over the next three years for an application-based community sport and recreation infrastructure fund. So that may be relevant to some of the expenses we have coming up within our community services department. There's some money for, not a lot, 5 million for annual transit, Ontario Transit Investment Fund. And one of our strategic priorities is to look at some form of transit system. So there may be some money to at least have a look at it and study it. There's also an acknowledgement that property assessments will not be updated until the Ministry of Finance completes their review of the taxation system in Ontario. So we're not sure the scope of that. I understand there's a task force working on it, but we'll get some information on what exactly they're looking at. You may recall about a month ago, council passed a resolution for a new deal for municipalities in terms of ability to raise funds, i.e. through taxes. It could be part of that. There was no specific mention of AMO's initiative for a new deal. So we're just trying to fill in the blanks on this one and I'll let you know what we find out. There's also some money for fire protection grants that the chief's going to be having a look at. And as well, 6.8 million over two years to support Starter Company Plus. And of course, that's delivered through the Small Business Enterprise Centre here in Town Hall. So we'll understand a little better what that one's about. So overall, a few policy statements that are relevant to what we do and a number of funding programs that we will likely have access to or should qualify for. So staff are looking at each of these and we're going to have a discussion and we'll bring that back with, once we get more details on the programs, on capital programs or strategic priorities that might fit some of the funding programs that were announced. So overall, I think very encouraging for municipalities. There was a lot of money for healthcare as well. But although it doesn't affect us directly, it does affect us indirectly. So some good news in the budget. One item that we should all be aware of is the province is not predicting a surplus. Expect to be in a deficit position until 2027. So that's significant in terms of the debt load the province is carrying and the carrying costs of that debt, which are in the budget document and are quite staggering. So more information, but that's kind of a quick snapshot of what came out of the budget for municipalities.
Thank you, CAO. Any questions?
Okay, one more item, Mr Chair, if I can. We're delighted this week we'll be hosting a delegation from Brant County. Brant County is, Brant Ford is kind of the center of Brant County. Included in Brant County, it's a single tier municipality, by the way, is the village, the town of Paris, Paris, Ontario. Quaint little town, not dissimilar to Smith Falls. The Grand River runs through Paris, much like the Rideau Canal does here. It's very historic. It was termed by Harris Smith magazines, the prettiest town in Canada at one time. So very quaint little place. Anyway, they have developed, they did a master plan for their downtown in 2019. Now they're implementing the master plan. And a central element of that plan is to move towards complete streets. So through an associative mind, they found out we did just that. So they're coming, there's four or five of them coming this week to have a look at what we did to the downtown here on Bequith Street and to get some ideas to incorporate into their downtown revitalization. So I think it's worth knowing that we've set the bar and others are watching and have taken note of what we've done to the downtown and are trying to replicate it. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you. Okay, so we have no committee of the whole consent reports. So let's move on to the priority issues and reports. Item 9.1, Support for Funding Application for Canada Cultural Spaces Report with Director Clark.
Hello, good evening. So I have two items for you. First is, as you said, the Support for the Canada Cultural Spaces Fund. Department of Community Services on behalf of Station Theatre has applied for $38,039.89. Tana Court is actually with the one who put the application together on their behalf. This represents 50% of a project that they're trying to undertake. Canada Cultural Spaces will fund up to 50% of any project. Station Theatre is looking to upgrade their lights to LED, which will reduce the fire risk for the building, which is significant. We're all a little testy about that right these days, so that's very helpful. It will also green the building and save on electricity costs and allow for a much less cumbersome experience in terms of swapping out lights and things. So they've been saving some, Station Theatre's been saving some dollars for this, but we agreed to support their application. This is an application they've made specifically on their own in the past without success. So we thought that we would give it a try. It seems to be going well. So Station, sorry, Canada Cultural Spaces Fund came back and said, what we need is a resolution that your council supports in this application. So that is what I'm looking for this evening.
Thank you. Any questions? Looks to me like we're getting thumbs up all around, so there you are.
I'll keep you posted.
And 9.2.
Okay, thank you. So strategic priority item 6.2 speaks to developing and enhancing the accessibility of our accessibility and inclusivity of our playgrounds. So before you, it's a high-level plan that is, for now, in the coming years, that will allow us to create better and more inclusive spaces for the community. So I'm seeking your approval of this proposed high-level implementation plan.
Any questions? Councillor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr Chair. It's just, the focus of this is just on accessibility. There's other initiatives that are going on at the same time. I'm supportive of the plan. Just wondered when, I guess, we'll get updates or at some point. It'd be nice to see them side by side and how they complement like our other playground and parks upgrades and how this fits in with that. Not tonight, but I just don't want to lose, I like, I need to see things together to understand. And, yeah, thanks. So I was thinking pump tracks, this isn't about those kinds of things. This is about accessibility.
So if I may, it's sort of, it's all encompassing in the sense that whatever we do, sort of the larger pieces of infrastructure, we'd like to make inclusive and accessible wherever possible. So if it is possible to make a pump track accessible, which it is possible, that would be a part of it. So the primary focus, as you're saying, is on inclusivity and accessibility for these spaces. We are doing separately different types of initiatives and so we can bring that forward too.
Thanks. Councillor Miller?
Thank you. Thanks for this work, Director Clark. And I support it in principle as well. I would think that the budget pieces would be a separate approval piece each year with the budget, but I think I'm safe in that assumption. And so, so I guess maybe councillor McKenna may have helped answer this because I wondered if we needed a full-size play structure in every park. That would make about seven, if my math's right. There's other things that we could probably do that are maybe more creative and I think you're that person that would come up with more creative things. So just wondering if we can then get that side-by-side thing before we kind of cement the details.
So if I could, not every place, not every playground will be full-size. And some of what we're looking at is actually, it'll be budget-dependent in some situations, but we'd be looking at incorporating different pieces or a smaller play structure. So not everything has to be the size of what's down at Lower Reach or that type of thing. And certainly not every footprint is able to withstand that. The RecMaster Plan does call for a play structure in each neighborhood. So if we're following that, that's something we'd like to do, but that doesn't preclude us from getting creative with different types of play structures. I don't necessarily believe that every play structure has to have swing sets and a slide and a climbing wall. That's not necessary. So when we do the design, which is part of, part of the challenge of putting this together is that we don't have the actual design for each of the play structures as it is because that's a cost that we don't have budgeted for this year. So what we would typically do is get the budget approval, go do a design and a build in the same year. And that would likely come back to council for review and approval, if that's what we're looking to do. But more specifically, we can take those ideas about what we think it needs to be in each community, each smaller neighborhood, and then develop from that. So for example, Lee Avenue, that parquet, we're calling it a parquet because it's not a full-size park. It doesn't have the footprint, the square footage and the footprint to be a really big showstopper situation, but we do think that it's perfect for a smaller unit of some sort.
Thank you.
Councillor Brennan?
Thank you for this. It's almost aspirational, I think, in a lot of ways. And we've talked before about that because just my bad math, it's about two and a half million dollars' worth of work to do. And we're not going to do that overnight, I know. So I support in principle the plan. I'm not approving of every project as written here because I do have questions, for instance, about Lower Reach Park because we're going to have a, we're going to have a study done, you know, how, what's that going to look like? So, you know, to revitalize a playground, I guess it's going to go somewhere, but that sort of thing. And also, you know, I'd have a question about where we're going to put a playground at the community center because there's some land there that I think, I'm not sure if you're thinking about it, but I'm not sure if that's the best place for it. But that'll come up as we go along. And so I, you know, I support it in principle. I'm not approving of every, every one of these projects, of course. And I think that point has been made, but yeah, I'm happy to support it. And then we'll have, we'll have a discussion as we go along about what things are going to look like.
Mayor Pango?
Yeah, thanks Director Clark. And I support as well as my colleagues. I think it's great to have the sensory features. I think it's going to be very important, especially for kids living on the autism spectrum. The rubberized mats, I guess from a question standpoint, lifespan, I assume, is quite long. So when we put these down, they're going to be, we're not going to have to be, replace a mulch on an annual basis like we are. But it's a bigger investment to do as a one-time, the one-time thing. It improves accessibility, obviously.
To that question, we're actually still trying to figure out if that's the lifespan on certain types. So there's different types of rubberized matting. Some of it's poured, some of it's poured in place. There's, there's different lifespans on each of them. Weather's also a key factor. So I have colleagues in Saskatoon who poured something a couple of years ago and it's just destroyed and they spent a significant amount of money on it. But there's colleagues in other communities where they did it 10 years ago and it's still in pristine condition. So a lot of it comes down to weather, adjacency to salt, all that kind of stuff. So we would want to make sure that it's the appropriate feature for that structure. Technically, playground chips, the mulch that we have are considered accessible, but you can't prove accessibility on a, on a technicality if somebody can't get their mobility aid across it. So we want to make sure we're actually being inclusive and reducing all the barriers. So we'll be looking at all of that. The poured rubberized matting is very expensive. So we want to make sure the lifespan is long.
Yes. Well, I think it's important to have this sort of forward-thinking document. And it's going to guide your decisions going forward and your budget recommendations to council. I think it's probably also an opportunity to track grants when we've got this plan in place. And especially when it comes to proving accessibility, inclusivity. And I think we've, we approved the Parks Master Plan. I think we've got a vision of having park space within a few hundred meters of most people in town. And that enables kids to be able to access recreation in an area where they don't have, ask their parents to drive them to. So I think that's very important to try and help put them around town. And I think it's, it's forward-thinking. I think it's comprehensive and I think it's forward each budget discussion every year.
Councillor Quinn?
Thank you. Thank you, Stephanie. That was a lot of work. I appreciate that. And I do have to agree that I'll support this in principle, but then we discuss each area as we go along. I know I had a discussion the other night about Highland Corbett Park and about some of the things that are in there that maybe could still be utilized in a certain way. And there's that old structure over there that the people would like to see gone. So there's things like that that are specific to that park that isn't the same in other parks and that's where we have to work through for sure. Are you looking at any equipment for people that are disabled so that they could use like a swing set for someone, say, that's in a wheelchair? Pull up to that and so.
So we're hoping that each playground, if I could, will have some sort of structure in place that will allow for wheelchair use in particular. There's some, they don't call them merry-go-rounds anymore. I think maybe they're not allowed to. Those were outlawed for a while, but they're spinners. So there's, there's spinners that we can put into communities that actually have, you can roll your mobility aid right into it, strap it in. There are swings that we could get that are specific to people in wheelchairs of different sizes. You know, children's wheelchairs and larger for pre-teens and pre-teens. So we do have, actually, there's a lot more on the market. So we do have a lot more options than what used to be available. So we're looking at all of those pieces. And we have been working with Carl to develop the Bellamy Farms proposal, or tender, rather, sorry, the request for proposals. And one of the key pieces in that is how do you, you know, you give us your best idea of what an inclusive playground looks like for this particular area. And we're getting some really good questions that indicate that there's a lot of people who have a lot of access to really cool place, features and structures though. I'm excited by the change because 10 years ago, we didn't have this kind of, this level of options. And you know, as councillor Brennan says, I'm nothing if not aspirational. So I recognize that this may change next year. But you know, from the department's perspective, this is about what we need to make sure we're having at the highest part of our list and tackling it as we can go through it year by year. So it gives us some direction and a guidance, sort of guiding document so that we can, at least in principle, make sure we're moving towards becoming more inclusive for the community.
Perfect. Thank you.
Councillor Maguire, have you got any comments or questions? Okay, I'll take that as a no. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So next up is 9.3 and 9.4 with Chief Cheeseborough. Dispatching Agreement with the Township of Minden Hills.
Thank you, Mr Chair. The report tonight is seeking council's approval to execute an agreement with the township of Minden Hills for fire dispatching services. The background is, back in 2023, we were contacted by Minden Hills. They were seeking an alternative to the current dispatching system that they were using. And we were hopeful that we would be able to engage. And at that time, there was a change in the leadership at Minden Hills and it was put on hold. So a few months later, we were contacted again. And there was a change in leadership. A few months after that, we were contacted a third time. So we brought Minden Hills for the breakdown of what the roles and responsibilities for Minden Hills would be if we were to entertain such a contract. Their current contract with Central Ambles Communications Center simply provided a dispatching center. They would receive the call, put in a page, that was the conclusion of the call. Based on today's standards, certain industry standards and liability and coverage for their firefighters, they were seeking a service that provided a 100% dispatching service. That includes not only receiving the call, dispatching the call, catting the call, providing documentation to the conclusion of the call, reaching all benchmarks throughout the course of the call, which is critical information, especially if they're doing interior structural firefighting, that they have constant contact with a live, a live person. Throughout this process, we provided that, that we currently did provide, a 100% service. However, at the time, we were in the middle of both putting in the brand-new radio system and trying to finalize the grant funding phase one and two. We have reached both the conclusion of the implementation of the new radio system and we're well positioned for our third round of grant funding once it's determined should we require any further grant funding. There's a number of items that Minden Hills has to have put in place at the cost to Minden Hills. Any infrastructure on their end, towers, radios, cabling, is at their cost. It was estimated that there would be an $8,000 to $12,000 cost for them to get that established. Then they had to provide a complete set of mapping that would be integrated into our system and have to be compatible with the current system that we're having. They would have to follow the radio protocol, the communications protocol that we have provided to them. On our end, we've provided the information with regards to qualifications, the type of reports that we would be able to provide, the benchmarking process, which is required both through the Fire Marshal's Office and through NFPA. We have a written disaster emergency recovery communications plan in place. We've been able to provide a complete backup system at our wastewater plant that we previously did not have. So we're, we're in a good position to do that. The current cost that they would be provided for 2023 was $26,141, but they would, that would be prorated based on the start date that we'd be looking at. They're currently looking to have all their requirements in place along with the contact with Bell Canada into our system as early as July the 3rd. So we put July the 3rd down as a potential cutover date, but that's pending. All the requirements have been met and the systems are in place to go. One of the things I will say is that this contract fits in well with their surrounding municipalities, Algonquin Highlands and Highlands East. They were currently being dispatched by Smith Falls. So it makes good sense that they were able to sole source to us. It's going to make it easier for mutual aid contacts, mutual aid activations within their area. We have a general geographical layout of that area, but it'll be more defined once they submit those documentation. The last thing that I want to just touch on is while our new radio system will have the capability of expansion with regards to contracts, those contracts, as I previously mentioned, can only be supported by staff. So to take on additional contracts, in this particular case, that's an initial 300 calls per year. Based on the current number of calls that we dispatch for Lanark County, plus 300 calls a year that this department responds to, it's critical to ensure that we have people in place that are able to answer those calls. This is a situation where once we take on these contracts, we're responsible for them. So we provide the industry standard of answering 80% of the calls within 15 seconds and having a total dispatching load that's done within 45 seconds to them. That's if you have a prolonged telephone conversation with a person that's, that's on the other end or in a distressful situation. So keep them on the line. At the same time, the dispatcher is inputting the information into the system and preparing to send out the tones. Not uncommon for a major situation in any area that we dispatch for in this, in the town of Smith Falls, is to receive as many as 50 calls for a particular incident. We just recently had a grass fire reported north of us and there was 51 calls, 911 calls received. So it gets extremely busy with the phone ring, plus communicating with responding units that we're going to, you know, any more contracts, it's going to have to, we're going to have to take a look at whether or not we have the capability of having staff to support that contract. This is my report. Thank you, Chief.
Any questions, Councillor? Everybody looks unanimous.
I have a question.
Oh, do you? Sorry.
And I, I understand what you're saying about the staffing levels. The capability, say, for sake of argument, we upped the staffing levels. So that ups our capability to take more of these on?
Absolutely, without a question. And I think, I think in that regards, it's, it's a better selling feature. But as explained to the staff, and I've had some very detailed discussions with the staff, is my approach, and I'll continue to repeat this. My approach has been that you put together the case for taking on additional contracts, but you don't go ahead and hire 10 people in hopes or anticipation you're going to get those contracts. We have, we have the capability and flexibility right now that if there was a larger municipality or county that wanted to come, if they're willing to commit that they want Smith Falls or sole source of Smith Falls, then we'll come back to council, request the staff and to support that contract. But I don't think it is, and again, I don't think it's wise or appropriate to hire a whole bunch of people and then hope you get the contracts. This is a very, very, you know, it's an industry that there's lots of bottoms. We're not the only option in town. We're not the only dispatch available to individuals that are seeking that or municipalities are seeking it. And are we, are we competitive? I think we're competitive from a number of, of angles to it. One, because of the departments that we currently dispatch, it makes sense for a neighboring one to come with us. We have a lot of the information already on the system. We could provide more than reasonable costing for that. We've increased the costing for this contract over the previous ones, which makes us still competitive, but also makes us reasonable. So we're not going to take a small jurisdiction and gouge them. I can tell you that Minden Hills is paying two and a half times the cost to Smith Falls for dispatching what they're paying Ambles Dispatch and the $12,000 in order to have their infrastructure in place. So they've got a substantial investment, but they've also got the reliability in the service level that we provide, which is, which is critical. So again, not to stretch out the answer to your question, I think the business model speaks for itself that contracts once confirmed, the contract period start date is not the next day, the next week. There is a time period in between and that contract, depending on the size and scope, would certainly initiate additional staffing.
Okay. Through the chair, I would leave it to you, Chief, to come back to us and give us the business case for, for more people to help out. Thank you.
Councillor Miller?
So just to be clear, Chief, taking on Minden Hills is not adding staff for us right now?
The only thing that it has added is the current part-time position is receiving full-time hours. And that's, that approach that's been taken is not only for the number of calls and instances where there's been multiple calls, but it's also to reduce the amount of overtime that the firefighters are being called back for.
Sierra Morris? I would just add, thank you, Mr. Chair, that the additional cost for, for increasing hours is in the 2024 approved budget.
Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor McKenna? Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I support the recommendation with Minden and just along the lines of Counselor Brennan, just wondering where we're going, like, what's the long-term, what is the strategic plan? Five years, 10 years from now? I know municipalities can create and operate businesses. I mean, when do we spin it off and have it, or, or do we, and how much of your time, because, you know, when do we stop, and what is the five and 10-year, not tonight, but as Counselor Brennan said? Because you're, keep nibbling away, what is it?
Through the chair, just a quick answer to that is, CL Morris has, has asked me to do an evaluation of the current system, what the capabilities are, what the long-term capabilities are. There's a lot of things that are contingent on our capabilities. It's not only the ability to provide the service, but in five years, our contract with Owen Sound to be the primary PSAP will expire. That current cost is being covered by the provincial grant funding for next generation 911. And again, with that process coming in, we're scheduled the first quarter of 2025. We are still unsure of what the impact is going to be, call volume-wise, text message, pictures, photos, emails versus the old system where you picked up the phone dial 911. So it's going to be difficult to predict what, what the impact is going to be just from that alone. But we need to, we need to be in a position that if in fact, in five years, Owen Sound is no longer the primary public service answering point, then whether that's something we take on as being that primary, or we have to take a look and see what funds are available to, to have that done by another agency.
Any further questions? Counselor Quinn?
So, thank you. So Chief, listening to all of this, this is like a business that's taking the steps and gradually growing as they see the need and the capabilities of being able to handle this. So this is something that could become, put Smith Falls right on the map as far as what the fire department is doing here and dispatching. But you're doing it slowly, you're doing it gradually, and you're doing it step by step as demands out there and as you have the capabilities of filling that demand, right?
Through the chair, you, you are correct, Counselor Quinn, and, and again. It's difficult on any level to predict what a call volume is going to be. It's difficult to predict what the call volume in, in the town is going to be. But our number one priority outside of, of dispatching contracts is the safety and security of the residents of Smith Falls. That's paramount. So we're not going to put ourselves in a position where we're going to compromise the safety of the residents in town versus a $10,000 contract. It doesn't make sense. So it's, it's truly a balancing act, meeting the needs of our own, as well as providing a level of service that we're committing to.
Just one other question. So when you're talking that we could need more staff, you're not talking firefighters. You want firefighters doing what firefighters are trained to do. You're talking about someone, a dispatch person in there or people in there is the staff that you're looking at right now as this dispatch grows, right?
Through the chair, you're correct. If, if, if the end result is to have a communications division, then individuals that would be hired would be dispatchers and communicators. Firefighters are, you know, here to do the firefighting jobs, but also on that note, similar to other municipalities providing the same service, the firefighters would be backups to the communicators.
Thank you.
Counselor McGuire, have you got anything you want to add?
That's it on my end, if you can hear me.
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. So on with the property standards, Chief?
Thank you. This report is, is twofold. It's providing information on what the, our current activity is for this year and part of last year. It's also to answer the question that was previously put forward by counsel, wanting to know what the process was for property standards. It's very simplified, in my world, it's a very simplified process, where we can receive a complaint either by phone, by email, by someone coming in, by a member of staff, public counsel, or our bylaw enforcement officers may see an infraction that they deem to be a concern with regards to property standards. Item number one is to contact the property owner, have the discussion with the property owner and try to come to an immediate resolution. If that's a quick, a quick discussion where they can clean up the situation, take care of it, then the files, the file is closed. If the property owner is not capable of doing that, we would provide the property owner, owner a timeframe to get the issue cleaned up. If they're unsuccessful, we had issued an order to comply. The order to comply would have a fixed date on it for the property owner to comply with. Most of the time, and I'll say it's in the high 90s, if the initial discussion doesn't persuade, an order to comply usually is very persuasive and the property's cleaned up. If, if for some reason, you know, the property owner requires additional time on an order to comply, again, if they can demonstrate that they've taken steps towards rectifying the situation, an extension is provided. And again, if it's done, it's cleaned up, the file is closed. If the resident or the owner does not comply with the order to comply, the township has built in, we have the ability to have the work completed and the costs associated with that completion would be placed on their taxes through the municipal. So it is a cost recovery. That's, that's a, that's an extreme situation. Most people want to comply with that. They don't want that additional cost on their taxes. They certainly don't want to go through the process of having, you know, the order to comply and many visits and back and forth. It's important to know that any property standards issues, that's, I'm talking both interior and exterior, follow those same lines. Our goal is to be able to work with people to achieve compliance as opposed to coming in heavy-handed and, you know, laying down the law and saying, you will, you will. So if we can achieve it through, through conversation and get it solved, it's a pretty seamless process. What I can say is that the majority of the calls we receive for property standards deal with landlord and tenants. And unfortunately, our hands are tied somewhat when it, when it's talking, but inside someone's unit during a rental unit. To gain access in there and provide information to gain access is, it's a very difficult process. The property owner, the building owner, doesn't have legal access to enter anyone's property. So it's, that's, again, that's through communication, both with the, the owner and the tenant, to try to gain access so that we can take a look what the situation is and work with the individuals, both the tenant and landlord, to rectify the situation. So again, very simple, very simple process, but it's a very busy process as well. That's part one. Is there any questions on that before I go into part two? I'm pleased, pleased to have here tonight as well, Sierra Swindell, Sierra's one of our bylaw officers. And Sierra is actually the person who put together this PowerPoint presentation. She's done an exceptional job on it and I'm not going to go through it line by line, but I will highlight some of the areas that I want to touch on. So for 2022, this chart demonstrates total number of calls that were received, responded to, 661. As you can see, property standards was at the, at the top of the pile, 221 with animal control closely behind. Next slide. 2023 saw a reduction in that, down to 597. Property standards had a significant reduction. That significant reduction is based on weather. So in 2022, with the heavy snow and the ground being covered, property standards weren't so visible. With the lack of snow this year, in the intermittent snow coming in, property standards, things were cleaned up quicker, they were identified quicker. And our major call volume was animal control. Slide please. This next slide just gives an indication of the type of calls that we get for a property standard. So over the last two years, 31 to 33% of all cases have been property standards or state yards, and I, I won't go through them all. This is just a, a quick, a quick look at the types of calls that bylaw receives on a daily basis, and I, and true, I mean daily. Some of these calls can take 30 to 40 hours. If you have to continue to go back, you have to continue to try to reach out to the property owner. Some of the property owners are not local residents, so trying to make contact and going through our tax roll to get the information is a very time-consuming process. Some other calls can take two to five hours. Or have a quick conversation, identify the problem, give them a timeframe, and if it's corrected or they comply with it, you can move on. Next slide, please. 27, 28% of our call volume has been animal control. And this is something I'll spend just a couple of minutes on. Excuse me. Last year alone, 2023, we picked up 100 feral cats. Absolutely over the top in the cat population. This is a small window into the actual problem we have in the town. We're currently working with a building that's due to be demolished in May. The building owner or the contractors informed us that there could be as high as 60 cats inside the building. On top of that, down at the train tracks, we've been informed that there could be in excess of 100 cats down there that people are either putting food in or they're getting access to. We've run into a situation where laws, where the cat populations normally, the, the cats that we pick up are taken to have a very limited amount of space in order to take them. So we have to call ahead and they can take maybe one cat, two cats, or three cats. That's doing very little for the outbreak of feral cats that we have. The other places that we've looked at, try to rehouse these animals, but being, I'll call them wild animals, I say it respectfully, to get them in, the cost of spitting or neutering them, possibly providing them with, with injections and antibiotics and then releasing them, that's not something these other agencies can afford. I can say through the, the collaborative work with, with Counselor Quinn, we have a meeting tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock, that's going to involve a number of agencies and surrounding municipalities. There, there is a suggestion that not all the cats are from town, could be country cats coming into town. But at the end of the day, excuse me, at the end of the day, we're the ones that receive the calls and have to pick them up and deal with the situation. The cost for laws in 2023 was almost $14,000 just for the cats. So it's, this is, this is going to be a major undertaking in how we resolve this, how we address it, and what our ability is to deal with it. So we're hoping with the surrounding neighbors jurisdictions that we're going to bring to the meeting tomorrow, that they have some answers and some suggestions how we can correct this problem or certainly lessen the problem before it gets any bigger than what it is. So there's going to be public messaging that will be put together following our meeting regarding feeding of cats and taking in one or two strays that turn into five or 10 strays and then they're released again. So that information, once the group is done tomorrow, we're hopeful that we'll be able to put that out to everybody. Next slide, please. Again, this slide just indicates the type of calls that we receive, that they respond to, and the approximate time. So dogs at large are a difficult one. We work with Smith Falls Police and trying to locate these animals when they get the calls. Locating the animal, catching the animal, and then they've got a one-hour drive to Brockville and one hour drive back, weather dependent, and then they've probably got a half an hour of paperwork to do at the conclusion of that call. So a single dog can certainly use up the better portion of a day, once they've acquired it and taken it to, to Brockville. We also have missing animals that we're looking for, injured animals, bites and attacks. We've had two serious ones this year. And again, another time-consuming process and where the dogs go, if they're taken into quarantine, if they have to be transported to Brockville, what the ownership responsibility is, and if they're going to pick the dog up. I will say that both myself and one of the councils had a discussion with the SPCA, which I found quite concerning. In Ontario, pit bulls, pure red pit bulls are illegal. So if the pit bull is acquired, picked up in town for whatever reason, it's transported to the SPCA, we thought that the dog would be held through its quarantine and then the dog would be put down. Unfortunately, that's not the case. They ship these dogs to other provinces. So those dogs continue on elsewhere. So we're, we're again, we're, we're dealing with, with unregulated animals and then at the end of the day, they could be taken to Montreal, they could be taken to Alberta, they could be taken anywhere and not, not unlikely that the dog could return. We've been dealing with the number of dogs and cats, both in the homes, our bylaw addresses both of those items. Public nuisance, feeding of birds and wildlife. We try to take the welfare of, of animals outside our care and control and pass that on to different agencies, whether it's Ministry of Natural Resources or the Provincial Animal Welfare Services. Next slide, please. Over the past two years, parking inquiries and complaints have risen to between 17 and 22% of the department's total calls. We also deal with permit sales and inquiries, general parking inquiries, violation inquiries, street use permit inquiries, and the winter, the winter parking restrictions. So the patrols, we do an average of two a day, depending on what other types of calls have come in. We do the chalking, that takes 30 to 45 minutes when they're doing it on foot. The vehicle travel using the new system, one to two hours a day. We patrol municipal lots, we monitor different lots and especially the fire accesses and parking in hydrants, in front of hydrants. Next slide, please. Best part of the presentation so far is, is the actual revenue that's coming in. So total 738 violations were, were processed in 2023 and that accounted for just over $20,000 in paid violation fines. Total 80 violations notices were sent to collections, just over $3,000. 524 warning violations were issued. A lot of those warning violations were issued during the winter control measures. So the grand total of 1,342 violations and the permits that were issued for 2023, $12,500. This slide just indicates type of duties that they normally do or are called to, whether it's people putting snow out on the sidewalk or blowing leaves and grass all over the road, noise complaints, smoking complaints, dangerous trees, or basketball nets where the kids are putting them out on the streets. We also provide coverage for the crossing guards, where the crossing guard is unable to either make a morning shift or an afternoon shift, one of the bylaw officers goes and covers that shift. On top of that, both bylaw officers attend two-plus weeks a year in training for their certification. So Municipal Law Enforcement Officers Association require annual certification and training. Next slide, please. This slide just depicts what the administrative duties are. So we're working with CGIS, whether it's court proceedings and the documentation and all the parking information. That's very time-consuming on top of the regular duties, but it also takes someone off the street or in a vehicle to complete these types of activities. This is all outside any service that they provide for special events or any other activities that come up through at the course of the year. that come up through at the course of the year. Next slide, please. So just to give Council on idea, the average parking patrol is thirteen hundred and twenty hours a year. Again, complaints, seventy-two percent. Property standards, thirty to thirty-one percent. Animal control, twenty-seven to twenty-eight. Our overtime hours, we've been very fortunate, are at a very modest, in my opinion, eighty-five hours at time and a half, and seventy-five hours of straight time. So it gets broken down as to how the time's been applied for both bylaw officers. But I can tell you that the amount of work that goes into processing some of the municipal infractions and the appearance in court or at the landmark tenant tribunals takes up a lot of time. And certainly, we're looking towards the possibility of providing private lot parking control. We currently have four or five agreements that were signed a number of years ago. We've had two additional calls for that service. But at the present time, given the amount of hours and the amount of work these two have, at this point in time, that's not a possibility. So we've had, the most recent one is from the hospital and the overflow parking that they feel is being used by non-staff or non-people going into the hospital. They've requested it. Walmart, Canadian Tire, the independent store, Rivington's have asked for the private parking cover. But at this time, we're just not able with the two staff and single vehicle to provide the level of service that they would need and or expect. So moving forward, if council was to entertain adding a third bylaw officer to this group, this officer would not only be able to, we would be able to provide that level of service in the private lots, but we would also be able to take on some of the winter parking control or all the winter parking control that's currently being done by public work staff and have a rotational shift for the three officers that would be on, that could provide that same level of parking enforcement during winter control operations. That is my report for this evening, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions or comments?
Sure. Thanks, Chief. Great report, great to have the insight, and thanks Sierra put that together. Cats obviously are concerning. And if there is roughly sixty in one place and maybe a hundred over there, the challenge in trying to catch them and get them somewhere, I mean, if we don't get ahead of that before long, it's two hundred plus over there. And certainly by winter, I would think that. So I mean, how do we manage this? I'm encouraged by having a meeting tomorrow, but is that just our buddy partners? Or we have all municipalities across the county involved in that meetings? I'm sure this probably isn't isolated to us.
Through the chair, your worship, no, it's not. It's not isolated just us. Not all jurisdictions or partners or surrounding us will be present. We're hopeful to get as many here as possible. I'll be very honest with you. I have a different approach to the process, certainly concerning buildings, abandoned buildings or buildings that are due for demolition. If those individuals want to work with us to assist in the collection of these animals, that's great. If they don't, as a registered property owner, they should be responsible for the contents of that building. So that's an option that we could take a look at. Not going heavy-handed again, again, trying to work with the owners. The biggest concern that we have is the ability to take them somewhere. Laws has a very limited capacity. There have been times, numerous times, that we've called and said, we have two cats breakdown, and they say, I'm sorry, we have nowhere to put them. We have no means of keeping the animals overnight or housing them. We can certainly provide food for them, but we have no other means. And these places that take in animals where they can rehouse or rehabilitate, they're busting at the seams as well. So they're getting it the same as we are. And our ability to handle the situation, you're a hundred percent right. If it's not addressed immediately and aggressively, it only tends to expand from there, which we currently don't have the capability of dealing. Certainly, the cost to the taxpayers is exorbitant.
Well, again, I think it's not unique to us. I think we've got to look at all of our partners, not just our buddy partners, but across the county, and look towards, maybe need to look at addition to the laws or something because the main approach is to provide these animals with care, proper veterinary care, and house them until they can find a home. In many cases, somebody never find a home. So if that's the approach, we need to make sure that there is a space. Otherwise, what we see now is only going to be a tip of the iceberg.
And on top of that, laws will not take an animal that's exhibiting any signs of illness or injury. Our after-hours ability to take an animal to a veterinary clinic is the emergency vet services in Ottawa or Merrickville. In any emergency veterinary service, regardless of the animal, you're doubling the cost. Not to mention the drive time, the stand and wait, and then who's going to pay for it, which, again, the cost is borne by the taxpayer.
And second question, I guess regarding dogs, we've held microchipping clinics in the past. I know that's scheduled for this year again as well. Because obviously, the best solution if your dog is microchipped, staff are going to know that, they're going to return the dog.
Absolutely.
So I'm not sure if that's on the agenda or not, but just figuring the parking violations. And just like, we had about eight hundred, roughly, sent to collections. Sorry, eighty, eighty sent to collections. Total of thirty-three hundred dollars. So I mean, it's only about forty dollars per violation sent to collections. Does the, those committing the infraction have court costs on top of that? Like, it's a pretty mod, if it's only about forty bucks, I appreciate there's maybe not a big motivation for people to step up and pay it unless there's a higher consequence, a greater consequence.
Well, and what we've witnessed is due to the massive backlog in the court system, people will just avoid paying it or just ignore it in the anticipation that the courts are so backlog, that the court throws it to the side. That's happened in a good portion. The other portion that goes to collection agency, we get a portion of whatever they collect based on what that is. Is something better than nothing? Yes. Is it worth the time and effort for us to continue for non-paid to try to collect that on our own? Again, resources and time management don't provide that for us at this point in time.
Maybe we can increase that. I'll just leave it at that. Sorry. I'll give you the time.
Counselor Brennan?
Thanks, Chief, and thank you, Sienna, for this great report. And I would encourage all the citizens to read this because I think that bylaw enforcement is probably one of the toughest jobs that we employ because you're often dealing with angry people. And nothing really makes my phone ring more than these types of complaints of property standards and that sort of thing. And alls I do is hand it off to you people, and it's solved. So I really appreciate that. So, yeah, everyone should read this to see exactly what we do here and what our staff does in terms of property standards and animal control that that's shocking that we've just talked about. And I didn't, I had no idea that we had that many feral cats running around. So thanks so much for this. And alls I would say is keep up the good work.
Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief, was there, tell me about the trees. So if I'm worried, will the bylaw actually say whose tree the property's on to help solve it? Or, because that's got to be, I'm just curious.
Through the chair, I'm glad you asked the question. We recently had this situation. And the property owner was identified. And your tree on your property is your responsibility. If it poses a threat either to the general public or the neighboring properties, then an assessment can be done and determine that, you know, the health of the tree and whether it needs to be trimmed or pruned or cut back or removed. And that's at the expense of the property owner.
So you'll, if I may, just so you, because sometimes it's often a dispute. Trees go wherever they want to. Just experience with that.
So what we do is we come back in with the location, we go through the planning department, determine exactly what the property lines are. And again, walk out to and talk to the property owner and the neighbor who's may have a concern, see if they can work something in. If they can't, then assessment's done. The assessment that we had done, we brought them in, there was no charge for the assessment. And they did a detailed report. One was provided to the person of concern, one was provided to the property owner.
Lot of work.
Lot of work.
Thank you.
Counselor Quinn?
Thank you. And on the trees, I know I was involved with one just lately. And that did take a lot of work. You did get it resolved, and there was great danger in that particular incident. And thank goodness, thank goodness bylaw was there. Thank goodness they were there to handle this because it could have got out of hand. We could have had a couple of neighbors that could have got quite upset with one another. So thank goodness for bylaw. And on the cats, yes, it's hard to believe that we do have that many cats out there. And hopefully, the meeting that we're having tomorrow, doesn't mean we've got everybody on board, but at least it's a first step. At least we've got quite a few, a few people coming. And we'll get the word out so that people do understand what we really are dealing with. And there are a lot of feral cats that do need to be looked after. And they're just like anybody's cat. They all have feelings, and they all need to be taken care of.
Thank you for your report, Chief. Court Castello's brought to my attention that we can defer the in-camera session to another committee or a whole meeting as we have some guests in attendance. So, anybody in favor? All right. Any board, external organization, patients? None? No correspondence items? Notice of motions? Well, I'm going to need a motion for adjournment then. Moved by Counselor Quinn, seconded by Counselor McKenna. Office favor? Were adjourned?
Couple minutes to get organized here. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome back to the special meeting of Smith Falls Town Council for Monday, April eighth. I'll open the meeting with our land acknowledgement. On April eighth, two thousand twenty-four, we acknowledge that the sacred land of which Smith Falls is now located has been a site of humidity for over ten thousand years and is rich in indigenous history. This land is the ancestral and ancestral territory of the Algonquin Anishnabi Nation. We're also grateful to the Algonquin ancestors who cared for the land and water in order that we might meet here today. Also grateful to the Algonquin people for their contribution in the making of the Rito Canal, which runs through Smith Falls. We're mindful of broken covenants and the need to reconcile with all the relations. Together, may we care for this land and each other, drawing on the strength of our mutual history of nation-building through peace and friendship and being mindful of generations to come. I will call the meeting to order. I ask for approval of the agenda, which is with Counselor Quinn, please.
Thank you, your worship. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Robinson, that the April eighth, two thousand twenty-four special council meeting agenda be approved as circulated.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Quinn, seconded by Counselor Robinson, that the April eighth, two thousand twenty-four special council meeting agenda be approved as circulated. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. I ask for disclosure of peculiary interest or any other conflict of interest in general nature thereof. Seeing none, we move on to approval of the minutes with Counselor McKenna, please.
Yes, your worship. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Robinson, that the minutes, oh, yes. Thank you. Excuse me. That the minutes of the March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four council meeting be approved as circulated.
Thank you. Is moved by Counselor McKenna and seconded by Counselor Robinson, that the minutes of the March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four council meeting be approved as it was. All in favor? That's also carried. Thank you. Onto reports, updates, announcements, reports, many members of council tonight. Ms. Counselor Quinn?
Thank you, your worship. Just a few things this evening. Cadda Rockway Trail is having a cleanup of the trail on April the twentieth. And we're looking for people that would be interested in the Smith Falls portion of the trail just to clean it up a bit. Reel have a few things going on. On Saturday, April the thirteenth, is the start of preparing the soil for the mini forest. And that's in Corbett Highland Park. If anyone's interested, they'd be more than happy to have some help there. April the twentieth to the fourth, they're doing pitch-in week, or May the fourth. May the fourth is the shoreline cleanup. And don't forget to get your rain barrels ordered. And as you heard the fire chief mentioned earlier, tomorrow we are having a meeting on feral cats. And we're looking for more people that would be interested and get involved with this. And there will be information coming forward about what is happening.
Thank you. Any further reports? Seeing none, okay. I've got a few presentations and proclamations. Seeing none, okay. I've got a few presentations and proclamations this evening. Very excited to welcome to us tonight two Special Olympians, two Special Athletes who have had incredible success at the national level. So I'm going to, I'll talk a little bit about it here, then I'll go to the podium and present next presentations to them. But of course, the Calgary Special Olympics were held between February 27th and March 2nd. 250 athletes from Ontario were at the Games. I think we see a couple of shirts, I guess sweaters out here of, that were presented against a team Ontario members. It looks great. Jesse Neal and Callum McKenzie joined. 1,200 athletes with developmental and intellectual disabilities from across Canada came home with medals. In total, Team Ontario came home with 200 medals, including 72 gold, 67 silver, and 70 bronze. On February 29th, Smith Falls Police Service hosted the annual polar bear plunge. I think it was probably plus 15 the day before and about minus 30 that day, plus the wind chill. It was a very cold day and they raised over $9,400 for Special Olympics in our community. So a great thanks to the Smith Falls Police Service for what they always do, of course, with our Special Olympians. So Jesse Neal won bronze in five-pin bowling. And Callum, as, as we can all see from up here, won three medals, two silver and a bronze in snowshoeing. McKenzie competed in the snowshoeing event and placed second in the 400 meter, the 4x400 relay, and bronze medal in 1,600 meters, placed fifth in the 800 meter, narrowly missing another medal. So imagine giving all you have for a mile on snowshoes. So I wouldn't even want to think what that would be like. But if I can get Jesse and Callum to join me at the podium, come on up. I'll be over there in a moment. Jesse, mayor and counsel are honored to present this certificate to Jesse Neal. Congratulations on your success in your bowling career. I assume it's not over yet. I assume you plan to continue to compete in bowling. And your most recent achievement at the National Special Olympics in Calgary, bringing home a bronze medal. Your hard work, your passion for the sport, determination to continue to achieve your goals are truly admirable, and best wishes for future endeavors. And Callum, mayor and counsel are honored to present this certificate to Smith Falls resident, Callum McKenzie. Congratulations on your success in your snowshoeing career. The most recent achievements at the National Special Olympics in Calgary, bringing home three medals, silver in the 400 meters, bronze in the 1,600 meter race, and silver in the 4x400 meter relay. Your hard work, passion for the sport, determination to continue to achieve your goals are truly admirable, and best wishes for your future endeavors. And also, they've been recognized for fans because no athlete anywhere achieves any level of success without the support of their families. And we understand the training involved, the commitment involved, the travel involved. So thank you to the family members who are here as well to support their athletes and these Special Olympians. Callum, congratulations. Jesse, congratulations. Very proud of you. Great accomplishment. Yes. And on behalf of the town and council, just a couple of gifts for each of you. Heavy? For your athletes, you can handle it, okay? Awesome. Thank you very much. Great to see you two again. All right. Keep up the training. We look forward to seeing medals again in the future.
We go you guys.
Thanks again. Okay, we've also got a number of proclamations today, so please bear with me. I'm gonna drink water first. Okay, our first proclamation is World Autism Awareness Month, April 2024. Whereas autism spectrum disorder, ASD, is a neural developmental disorder that affects more than 100,000 Ontarians. Whereas autism spectrum disorder affects a person's social relationships, communication, interests and behaviors. Whereas early intervention for young children on the autism spectrum may help them develop communication, social and other skills resulting in more meaningful participation in their communities. Whereas children, youth and adults on the autism spectrum and their families can benefit from community support and inclusive practices. With this assistance, an increasing number of individuals on this autism spectrum are able to live and work independently. Whereas Autism Ontario is dedicated to increasing public awareness about autism and the day-to-day issues faced by individuals with autism, their families and the professionals with whom they interact. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Sean Pankle, Mayor of the Town of Smith Falls, to hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 as Autism Acceptance Month in the Town of Smith Falls. Secondly, Pitch In Smith Falls, April 20th to May 4th, 2024. Whereas hundreds of thousands of Canadians show their concern for the environment and their communities each year by participating in Pitch In Canada, projects to clean up and rejuvenate local neighborhoods. Whereas Pitch In Canada, a national organization comprised of eco-action and community volunteers, believes that maintaining a quality environment is everyone's responsibility. And whereas Pitch In Canada encourages voluntary action to keep communities clean and beautiful, restore, maintain a healthy environment, and instigate civic pride. Whereas the Rito Environmental Action League continues to provide excellent leadership and coordination of local environmental initiatives. And whereas the Rito Environmental Action League is once again organizing community-wide litter cleanup over town. Now therefore, I, Sean Pankle, Mayor of the Town of Smith Falls, declare the weeks of April 20th to May 4th as Pitch In Smith Falls Weeks, invite all citizens to participate in pitch-in activities in Smith Falls, and further, that all residents are encouraged to participate in the shoreline cleanup on Saturday, May 4th. And our next proclamation is International Day of Pink. On April 10th, let's celebrate visibility together. Whereas International Day of Pink is set up as an international day against bullying, discrimination, homophobia, transphobia, trans misogyny in cities and towns all across the world. Whereas on this day, everyone is invited to celebrate diversity by wearing a pink shirt and by organizing activities in workplaces, schools and communities in support of the day. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Sean Pankle, Mayor of the Town of Smith Falls, to hereby proclaim April 10th, 2024, where its International Day of Pink encourage all citizens to wear pink, spark some conversations and inspire acceptance in the Town of Smith Falls. And further, that on April 10th, 2024, let's celebrate visibility in all those foreigners being seen, acknowledged, respected, and listened to. And our second last proclamation, third last, Earth Day. Whereas Earth Day was initially celebrated on April 22nd, 1970, marking inception of the environmental movement and has since evolved into the largest participatory environmental movement on the planet. And whereas with urban areas set to become home to two-thirds of the world's population by 2050, and as climate change is being observed and experienced, municipalities find themselves at the front line of the battle against climate change. Whereas Earth Day is, is a key time to unite our community, make a positive impact on the environment, and be proactive and take bold steps to be part of the ecological transition to create a healthier environment for our citizens. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Sean Pankle, Mayor of the Town of Smith Falls, hereby declare April 22nd as Earth Day in the Town of Smith Falls and urge all citizens of the Town of Smith Falls to participate in activities and initiatives which support environmental awareness and stewardship. And visit https earthday.ca for more information. And Be a Donor Month. Whereas Be a Donor Month supports organ and tissue donation, donor registration. Whereas almost 1,600 people in Ontario are on the waitlist, and every three days, someone dies waiting for a life-saving, life-saving organ transplant. Whereas research shows a majority of Ontarians support organ and tissue donation, yet just 35% of eligible Ontarians have registered their consent to donate. And whereas families almost always consent to donation when there's evidence a loved one's registered their decision to donate, on the absence of registered donation decisions, families consent only half the time. And whereas everyone is a potential organ and tissue donor regardless of age, medical condition, or sexual orientation, one donor can save up to eight lives and enhance the lives of up to 75 more through the gift of tissue. Whereas on April 7th, 2018, a young Canadian named Logan Boulay became an organ donor in the aftermath of the tragic Humboldt Bronco bus crash and saved the lives of six others. Whereas the Canadian Transplant Association and the family of Logan Boulay will carry on Logan's legacy by recognizing April 7th as Green Shirt Day to raise awareness of the need for registered organ and tissue donors so that access to life-saving and life-transforming transplants can be improved. Now therefore, I, Sean Pankle, Mayor of the Town of Smith Falls, to hereby proclaim the month of April be, April as Be a Donor Month, encourage all citizens to learn more about the organ and tissue donation and transplantation. And that residents are asked to consider pledging their support to Be a Donor Month by registering as a donor at beadonor.ca. And before we move on to the final proclamation, just want to note, April 11th, you'll see the bandstand lit up blue for Parkinson's awareness. Also, the bandstand was blue for Autism Awareness Day. Wasn't sure if it was a green yesterday for, I think, Green Shirt Day, I believe. Yeah. And our final proclamation is for Parkinson's Awareness Month. Whereas the prevalence of Parkinson's disease in Canada has increased 50% over the past 10 years. Whereas the number of Canadians diagnosed with Parkinson's will continue to rise dramatically, particularly with an increased seniors population. Whereas approximately 30 people a day are currently diagnosed with Parkinson's in Canada. By 2031, this number is expected to rise up to more than 50. Whereas rural areas associated with farming and well-water use appear to have a higher concentrations of people with Parkinson's. And whereas the Parkinson's Community Network was established in 2023 to raise funds and awareness of Parkinson's in Lanark, Leeds and Grenville, has asked for council support to help increase awareness of the disease. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Sean Pankle, Mayor of the Town of Smith Falls, to hereby proclaim April as Parkinson's Awareness Month and April 11th as Parkinson's Awareness Day, and encourage my fellow councillors and citizens of Smith Falls to participate in the various events that PCN is organized through the month. And further, the Town of Smith Falls will join cities, towns and villages across Canada who are lighting up public buildings, bridges, towers and waterfalls in blue to acknowledge its support. And they will light up the bandstand and municipal complex on April 11th. And the Parkinson's Community Network is hosting a Meatball Madness and Karaoke for fundraising for Parkinson's community, April 20th, from 6 to 11, at Civitan Club of Perth. Honey Garlic Maple Glaze and Stroganoff Meatballs, served with rice or noodles, dinner rolls, coleslaw and apple crust. Tickets are $25. Be available at 267-4766 or 283-6640. You'll get opportunity to raise funds for Parkinson's Community Network. And Pat Evans, a longtime champion advocate in the fight against Parkinson's is with us today, and I want to just present the proclamation to Pat.
I just brought some bread.
Okay. So me too? Did you hear what you're told, right?
And we only have seven tickets left for the meatball.
Oh boy, actually, I'm bored of that.
I just want to say I appreciate all your support and all your help.
You had a great tea here.
Ready, ready? One, two.
Sure hope. That was great. Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Okay, we'll now head with our agenda. We have a consent agenda motion with Counselor McKenna, please.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Robinson, that the items in Consent Report 06-2024 received from the clerk, received and adopted.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor McKenna and seconded by Counselor Robinson, that items in Consent Report 06-2024 received from the clerk, received and adopted. Clerk Costello.
Thank you, Mayor Pankle. There's two resolutions this, this evening that were presented to council last week by Manager Barlow, the 2023 Water Pollution Control Plant Performance Report, as well as the 2023 to 2024 Smith Falls Drinking Water Inspection Report and Rating. We also have a resolution that, that corresponds with a correspondence item from last week regarding a request to the province to end Blue Box regulations for ineligible sources. And the final resolution is an appointment to the Smith Falls for all committee for a representative from the local health unit.
Thank you. Would any member of council like to pull anything from the consent agenda for further discussion? I'll call a motion. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Moving ahead, Canada Cultural Spaces Funding Program Station Theatre, Counselor Brennan, please.
Thank you. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Quinn, that the council of the Corporation of the Town of Smith Falls endorsed a funding application to Canada Cultural Spaces Funding Program on behalf of the Station Theatre in the amount of $38,000, $39.89 to be used to assist in upgrading their light current lighting to LED.
Take your discussion, please.
Yep, we discussed this earlier and we're going to endorse this application and do it on their behalf. It gives 50% of the total costs and will reduce fire risk and save money on hydro.
Thank you. Any further discussion? It is moved by Counselor Brennan and seconded by Counselor Quinn, the council of the Corporation of the Town of Smith Falls endorsed a funding application to the Canada Cultural Spaces Funding Program on behalf of the Station Theatre in the amount of $38,000, $39.89 to be used to assist in upgrading their current lighting to LED. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. And Counselor McGuire, I hope you're there. You're up next.
Thank you, worship. Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Miller, that the council of the Corporation of the Town of Smith Falls direct staff to instruct TSI Incorporated to prepare a request for proposal for a design-build arrangement to solicit proposals for the Confederation Drive River Crossing.
Thank you. And further discussion, counselor?
Yeah, this is an exciting one because it's going to move the River Crossing project forward, and I think it's finally the right way to go. So we've got a really clear vision for the River Crossing, coming from the design committee and then through council. TSI has, has come up with some really great work, finding interested parties that would like to bid on the project. Some really well-accomplished architectural firms and, and bridge companies that have shown interest in it. So hopefully we get some high-quality proposals from them and then council will be able to choose the best one for the crossing and hopefully create a landmark in the center of our town beside our UNESCO heritage site that will be able to be maintained in perpetuity.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Brennan?
Yeah, I'd like a required vote on this one, please.
Sure. Okay. It is moved by Counselor McGuire, seconded by Counselor Miller, the council of the Corporation of the Town of Smith Falls direct staff to instruct TSI Inc. to prepare a request for proposal for a design-build arrangement to solicit proposals for a timber bridge for the Confederation Drive River Crossing. A recorded vote has been requested.
Thank you. Council members could either respond with yea or a nay. Counselor Brennan?
Nay.
Counselor Quinn?
Yay.
Counselor Miller?
Yay.
Counselor McKenna?
Yay.
Counselor Robinson?
Nay.
Counselor McGuire?
Yay.
Mayor Pankle?
Yay.
Carried.
Thank you. And our next motion is with Counselor Miller, please.
Thank you. Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor McKenna. Whereas per Stats Statistics Canada data, in 2020, the median after-tax household income in Smith Falls was 56,400, the lowest of any lower or single-tier municipality in Lanark County. Beckwith is the highest at 107,000 and compared to 77,000 for Lanark County as a whole. Whereas, per the 2021 Census of Canada, 1,490 out of 9,085 residents of Smith Falls, 16.4% of the total, lived in low income based on the low-income after-tax measure. Whereas of the 1,490, 1,490 Smith Falls citizens living in low income in 2021, 120 of them were children five years old or younger. 215 of them were children between the ages of six and 17. 365 of them were seniors aged 65 or over. Whereas, the level of income is one of the most important social determinants of health and relates to many other determinants, including education and literacy, healthy behaviors, one's social environment, unemployment and work conditions. Whereas, low income is strongly correlated with a wide range of negative health outcomes, including heart disease, cancer, diabetes and poor mental health, and with shorter life expectancies compared to higher-income persons. Whereas, the minimum wage in Ontario and the maximum amounts of financial support available through Ontario works available through Ontario Works and Ontario Disability Support Program are deeply insufficient to meet the basic needs of full-time minimum-wage workers or of individuals or families drawing OW or ODSP support. Whereas, ongoing, widespread, and rapid changes in labor markets, including due to outsourcing, artificial intelligence, automation, and advance of the gig economy, are causing more and more people to be exposed to labor changes beyond their control, adding to their vulnerability to low income. Whereas, basic income is a means by which individuals, families, and whole communities can be less vulnerable to negative changes in health, relationship, or family status and labor markets, and better able to navigate transitions and challenging circumstances. Whereas, basic income is money distributed to eligible people regularly, reliably, and without work requirement, and which, absent other income, should meet basic human needs. Whereas, basic income exists in Canada in the form of longstanding programs like the Canada Child Benefit and the Guaranteed Income Supplement for Seniors, programs with demonstrated positive impacts on basic income recipients, economies, and our greater society. Whereas, there is a need to establish basic income security for working-age adults in Canada who, at present and in general, lack sufficient social protection against low income. Whereas, there is a growing body of evidence that basic income is not a disincentive on the pursuit or retention of employment, and that, further, basic income is more likely to support such pursuit or retention, given its stabilizing effect on the lives of people. Whereas, the gross cost of basic income is reduced to a net cost once various funding options are exercised and the fiscal benefits of basic income are realized, for example, basic income as a local economic stimulus. Whereas, Canada, one of the wealthiest nations in the world, has the fiscal capacity to support a basic income guarantee for working-age adults. Whereas, the call for basic income in Canada has been and is being made by public health authorities, including the Leeds-Grenville and Lanark District Health Unit per its November 2023 report on food insecurity within the health region. Whereas, the call for basic income in Canada has been and is being made by many other interests, including a growing number of municipalities in Ontario and beyond, and by a range of provincial and federal parliamentarians. Whereas, a 2022 National Public Opinion Poll suggests that six in 10 adults in Canada support the concept of basic income. And whereas, the Town of Smith Falls wishes to add its municipal voice to the call for a basic income guarantee for working-age adults in Canada, therefore, be it resolved that the Town of Smith Falls supports the concept of a basic income guarantee for working-age adults to help combat low income and economic vulnerability within our community, that the Town of Smith Falls calls upon the federal and provincial and territorial governments to collaborate on the design, introduction, implementation, and ongoing evaluation of a national basic income guarantee program for working-age adults, that the council of the Town of Smith Falls directs the mayor to write, A, a letter to Prime Minister Justin Trudeau, copy to relevant federal ministers, and to Lanark Frontenac-Kingston MP Scott Reed, and B, a letter to Ontario Premier Doug Ford, copy to relevant provincial ministers, and to Lanark Frontenac-Kingston MPP John Jordan, calling on these orders of government to collaborate on the design, introduction, implementation, and ongoing evaluation of a national basic income guarantee program for working-age adults, that the council of the Town of Smith Falls directs the mayor to write a letter to each of the mayor's counterparts in the lower-tier municipalities in Lanark County, encouraging each municipality to also pass a resolution similar to that adopted by the Town of Smith Falls, that a copy of this resolution be shared with all other municipalities in Ontario, and with the presidents of the Eastern Ontario Mayor's Caucus, the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, the Rural Ontario Municipal Association, and the Federation of Canadian Municipalities.
Thank you, councillor Early, for answering the table of order before I ask for any additional comments.
It's long. Okay, thank you. So, this is a resolution that can help us advocate for the need for basic income program in Canada. As you heard, our community has the lowest levels, lowest income levels in Lanark County, and we're hoping that by using the power of our collective voices, we can influence change through this resolution. Interesting to note that should this resolution pass tonight, Smith Falls would be the first municipality in Lanark County to have signal support for basic income. We would join many other Ontario municipalities that have passed similar resolutions, including Belleville, Clearview, Greater Napony, Grimsby, Guelph, Hamilton, Kingston, Kitchener, Niagara Falls, the list goes on. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments? Councillor Brennan?
Yeah, I made my comments at the committee hall, but I would like another recorded vote on this one, too, please.
Okay. Councillor Quinn?
That's what I was asking for, was a recorded vote, please.
Okay, thank you. Just before I reread it, I add my support to it, obviously, but I guess we look at the one thing that really stands out, of course, we do have a basic income for those who are 65 and over, the Guaranteed Income Supplement. Okay, I'll come back to you, councillor McGuire. And we looked, we still have 365 seniors who are living below the low-income measure, and I can't imagine what that number would be if it wasn't for the Guaranteed Income Supplement and what that means for the scenes of our community. But I think it's, even though it is a deep contrast from the way we've always done things in this country, I think without significant change and the adoption of a basic income program, I fear those who are living in deep poverty now will be in a much worse situation going forward. We look at the cost of the basics between housing and food security, that occupies a far greater proportion of the income of someone who's living below the low-income measure or living in poverty, of course, of the average person in our community. So, the world will get much more difficult unless there is significant change. So, I'll add my voice to it, and councillor McGuire, you have a comment as well?
No, after that well-read story from councillor Miller, I think it's, and your comments has been well-covered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. It is moved by councillor Miller and seconded by councillor McKenna. Per Statistics Canada data, in the 2020 meeting after-tax household income in Smith Falls was $56,400, the lowest of any lower-tier or single-tier municipality in Lanark County. Beckwith had the highs at $107,000, and compared to $77,000 for the Lanark County as a whole. Whereas, per the 2021 Census of Canada, 1,490 out of 9,085 residents of Smith Falls, 16.4% of the total, lived in low income based on low-income after-tax measure. Whereas, of 1,490 Smith Falls citizens living in low income in 2021, 120 of them were children five years old or younger; 250 of them, 15, were children between six and 17, and 365 of them were seniors aged 65 or over. Whereas, the level of income is one of the most important social determinants of health and relates to many other determinants, including education and literacy, healthy behaviors, one's social environment, and employment and work conditions. Whereas, low income is strongly correlated with a wide range of negative health outcomes, including heart disease, cancer, diabetes, and poor mental health, and with shorter life expectancies compared to higher-income persons. Whereas, the minimum wage in Ontario and the maximum amounts of financial support through the Ontario Works and the Ontario Disability Support Program are deeply insufficient to meet the basic needs of full-time minimum-wage workers or of individuals or families drawing OW or OWSP support. Whereas, ongoing, widespread, and rapid changes in labor markets, including due to outsourcing, artificial intelligence, automation, and advance of the gig economy, are causing more and more people to be exposed to labor changes beyond their control, adding to their vulnerability to low income. Whereas, basic income is a means by which individuals, families, and whole communities can be less vulnerable to negative changes in health, relationship or family status, and labor markets, and better able to navigate transitions and challenging circumstances. Whereas, basic income is money distributed to eligible people regularly, reliably, and without work requirement, at which, absent other income, should meet basic human needs. Whereas, basic income exists in Canada in the form of longstanding programs like the Canada Child Benefit and the Guaranteed Income Supplement for Seniors, programs with demonstrated positive impacts on basic income recipients, economies, and our greater society. Whereas, there's a need to establish a basic income security for working-age adults in Canada who, at present and in general, lack sufficient social protection against low income. Whereas, there's a growing body of evidence that basic income is not a disincentive on the pursuit or retention of employment, and that, further, basic income is more likely to support such pursuit or retention, given its stabilizing effects in the lives of people. Whereas, the gross cost of a basic income program is reduced to a net cost once various funding options are exercised and the fiscal benefits of basic income are realized, e.g. basic income as a local economic stimulus. Whereas, Canada, one of the wealthiest nations in the world, has a fiscal capacity to support a basic income guarantee for working-age adults. Whereas, the call for basic income in Canada has been and is being made by public health authorities, including the Leeds-Grenville and Lanark District Health Unit per its November 2023 report on food insecurity within the region. Whereas, the call for basic income in Canada has been and is being made by many other interests, including a growing number of municipalities in Ontario and beyond, and by a range of provincial and federal parliamentarians. Whereas, a 2022 National Public Opinion Poll suggests that six in 10 adults in Canada support the concept of basic income. Whereas, the Towns Smith Falls wishes to add its municipal voice to the call for basic income guarantee for working-age adults in Canada. Therefore, be it resolved, the Towns Smith Falls supports a concept of a basic income guarantee for working-age adults to help combat low income and economic vulnerability within our community. The Towns Smith Falls calls upon the federal and provincial and territorial governments to collaborate on the design, introduction, implementation, and ongoing evaluation of a national basic income guarantee program for working-age adults. The council of the Towns Smith Falls directs the mayor to write a letter to Prime Minister Justin Trudeau, copy to relevant federal ministers, and to Lanark Frontenac-Kingston MP Scott Reed, a letter to Ontario Premier Doug Ford, copy to relevant provincial ministers, and to Lanark Frontenac-Kingston MPP John Jordan, calling on these orders of government to collaborate on the design, introduction, implementation, and ongoing evaluation of a national basic income guarantee program for working-age adults. The council of the Towns Smith Falls directs the mayor to write a letter to each of the mayor's counterparts in the lower-tier municipalities in Lanark County, encouraging each municipality to also pass a resolution similar to that adopted by the Towns Smith Falls, and that a copy of this resolution be shared with all other municipalities in Ontario, and with the presidents of Eastern Ontario Mayor's Caucus, Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus, and the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, the Rural Ontario Municipal Association, and the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. A recorded vote has been requested.
Thank you. Again, if you could respond with either yea or nay. Councillor Brennan?
Nay.
Councillor Quinn?
Nay.
Councillor Miller?
Nay.
Councillor McKenna?
Nay.
Councillor Robinson?
Nay.
Councillor McGuire?
Yay.
Mayor Pankow?
Yay.
Carried.
Thank you. Okay, moving ahead, councillor McKenna, you have item 10.1.
Yes, moved by myself, seconded by councillor Miller, that a bylaw to approve and renew an exclusivity agreement between the Towns Smith Falls and Gee-Samir &amp; Sons Construction Limited for the exclusive right to submit a proposal to redevelop the former water treatment plant property located at 25 Old Mill Road, be received and read a first time and taken as read a second time.
Thank you. It is moved by councillor McKenna and seconded by councillor Miller, that a bylaw to approve and renew an exclusivity agreement between the Towns Smith Falls and Gee-Samir &amp; Sons Construction Limited for the exclusive right to submit a proposal to redevelop the former water treatment plant property located at 25 Old Mill Road, be received for the first time and taken as read a second time. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Discussion, councillor McKenna?
Yes, this is obviously a longstanding matter that council's been dealing with. We have a solid developer who had that exclusivity agreement, and as everyone knows, unfortunately, we had a fire there a year ago. While we all waited to see how that proposal might go forward, the town and the proponent, Mr. Samir, asked for an extension of nine months so that he can solidify his plans and bring something back to us before the end of 2024.
Thank you. Third reading. Any further discussion? Third reading, please.
I have a comment.
Councillor McGuire, yes?
Thanks, your worship. I'm going to be voting against this tonight. I'd like to ask for a recorded vote. The reason why is that we put this RFP out, when we put it out, there was two significant liabilities associated with the property. One was the environmental contamination, two was that there had to be consideration taken for the Ontario Heritage Act-designated buildings. As a result of that, we didn't get a ton of interest in the RFP, but the proponent did come forward. Post-fire and post-decision between the insurance company and to take down the buildings, the second major liability associated with the sites being removed, and millions of millions of dollars are being spent to remove that liability. So, I think the whole proposal or the whole request for proposal situation has changed. A new request for proposal should go forward once the demolition's completed and once the environmental liability is better known, and put it out there to other people that may have been interested that might not have put this proposal together because they didn't want to deal with the liability of the heritage buildings. So, for that reason, tonight, I will not be supporting another extension.
Thank you. So noted. Any further comments? We have a third reading, please.
Yes, again, moved by myself and seconded by councillor Miller, that a bylaw to approve and renew an exclusivity agreement between the Towns Smith Falls and Gee-Samir &amp; Sons Construction Limited for the exclusive right to submit a proposal to redevelop the former water treatment plant property located at 25 Old Mill Road, be now read a third time and finally passed, signed, sealed, and numbered 10537-2024.
Thank you. It is moved by councillor McKenna and seconded by councillor Miller, the bylaw to approve and renew an exclusivity agreement between the Towns Smith Falls and Gee-Samir &amp; Sons Construction Limited for the exclusive right to submit a proposal to redevelop a former water treatment plant property located at 25 Old Mill Road, be now read a third time and finally passed, signed, sealed, and numbered 10537-2024. Recorded vote has been requested.
Thank you, Mayor Pankow. Again, if you could respond with yea or nay. Councillor Brennan?
Nay.
Councillor Quinn?
Nay.
Councillor Miller?
Nay.
Councillor McKenna?
Nay.
Councillor Robinson?
Nay.
Councillor McGuire?
Nay.
Mayor Pankow?
Yay.
Carried.
Thank you. Councillor Quinn, you're up next.
Thank you, your worship. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Robinson, that a bylaw to approve the execution of an agreement with the township of Minden Hills to provide dispatching services for a five-year period be received and read a first time and taken as read a second time.
Thank you. Moved by councillor Quinn, seconded by councillor Robinson, that a bylaw to approve the execution of an agreement with the township of Minden Hills to provide dispatching services for a five-year period be received or read a first time and taken as read a second time. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Discussion, councillor Quinn?
This is an agreement that's coming into place for 100% dispatch with the township of Minden Hills, starting in July of 2024, and we're very pleased to add this dispatch service to our dispatch that we have going here and gradually growing our service, and I really feel that it's putting Smith Falls on the map as to what our fire department is doing here and the dispatch work that they're doing. And it's like a business, it's going to grow slowly and steadily, and we will see where it goes from there, but we're very, very happy to have the township of Minden Hills on board with us.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We have a third reading, please.
Thank you, your worship. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Robinson, that a bylaw to approve the execution of an agreement with the township of Minden Hills to provide dispatching services for a five-year period be now read a third time and finally passed, signed, sealed, and numbered
Thank you. Moved by councillor Quinn and seconded by councillor Robinson, that a bylaw to approve the execution of an agreement with the township of Minden Hills to provide dispatching services for a five-year period be now read a third time and finally passed, signed, sealed, and numbered 10538-2024. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Any inquiries or announcements? No? A confirmatory bylaw to councillor Robinson?
Thank you, your worship. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Quinn, that a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting on the 4th and 25th days of March 2024 be received and read a first time and taken as read a second time.
Thank you. Moved by councillor Robinson, seconded by councillor Quinn, by law to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting on the 4th and 25th days of March 2024 be received for the first time and taken as read a second time. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Discussion?
Yes, it's just a procedural issue to put it into the record, and we've done it.
Okay, thank you. Third reading, please.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Quinn, that a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting on the 4th and 25th days of March 2024 be now read a third time and finally passed, signed, sealed, and numbered 10539-2024.
Thank you. Moved by councillor Robinson, seconded by councillor Quinn, the bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting on the 4th and 25th days of March 2024 be now read a third time and finally passed, signed, sealed, and numbered 10539-2024. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. And adjournment, councillor McKenna?
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Robinson, that this council adjourns proceedings at 18:50. It stands so adjourned till the next day is called meeting of council.
Thank you. Thank you. Moved by councillor McKenna and seconded by councillor Robinson, this council adjourns proceedings at 6:50 PM. It stands so adjourned till the next duly called meeting of council. All in favour? Carried, we are adjourned. Goodnight, everyone.